Trucks of fill to grade it out and fill in some areas that needed to be leveled off. So I'd like to know how many commissioners we have now that are on the board? And I'd like to get more information on the two appointees.
Well, before we conclude the meeting, I'm going to address that with the city clerk and the members if they allow me to at the conclusion after we appoint these new people and ask for a meeting with the mayor so that each and every one of us and more importantly, the community knows what's going on.
I have no idea if we have a quorum for me.
We have two major projects that's facing the Conservation Commission, the Riverside and Suffolk Downs site.
And Oak Island too, right now.
And they need attention of people that have knowledge on conservation law. So those are very important impacts on our community. Counselor Serino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know we're talking about the ConCon, but if we could add the ZBA to that as well because a couple of weeks ago there was a ZBA meeting and there were some questions if they were going to be able to reach a quorum because I believe there's either a vacancy or two because somebody has resigned or there are two vacancies on the ZBA right now as well. And that was a concern. They had a public meeting advertised and were they going to be able to reach a quorum for it? So if we could add the ZBA with that.
Thank you. What we'll do now is we're going to ask the two new appointees to be present and.
Mr. President, Mr. Chairman, can I just say one thing too?
Make it quick because you know, I indulge upon the committee of the whole.
I really do think if we're going to do conservation land, a committee for conservation land, we should have a lawyer that knows the laws of conservation.
Well, we'll talk about that when we get to group together.
All right, thank you.
But I'm sure that the mayor is probably watching and I'm sure he's understanding and I'm sure he's as concerned about it as we are. And he's probably happy that this has been brought out so people can have an awareness because the hum in the whole city is, you know, a lot of towns have, you know, people talking and everybody's giving false truths around. We want to know what's going on. So we have two appointments. Counselor, can we just proceed with the appointments subcommittee and then we go from there? The next is 21-133 is the appointment of Zachary Bisconti to the Conservation Commission. And Zachary is going to join us via electronically. Zachary, welcome. Please state your name and address for the record, please Zachary.
Zachary Bisconti, 123 Augusta Street in Revere, Mass.
Zachary, before we proceed, is there, what was the reason you couldn't be in attendance this evening?
Right now, I'm not sure if you've heard of it. There's this camp called Camp Drabberwaki on Martha's Vineyard. It's a camp for people with cerebral palsy. And so I am a counselor there, I'm a caretaker. And so that's for the whole month of July. And so I unfortunately let, I spoke with JD over the phone during my interview in June. So unfortunately for July, that was my kind of.
Okay, that's enough.
Well, keeping me.
Yeah, that's great. Okay. Is there any members of the appointment subcommittee wishing to have any conversation with Zachary, our new appointee? Counselor, Counselor Janino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank him for making the effort to be here. It sounds like he had an extenuating circumstance and rather than saying, no, I can't be there, he made an effort to work with you to make sure that he was here tonight. So I think that shows, you know, his character and I think that I look forward to voting for him. Thank you.
Any other members of the appointment subcommittee? Zachary, I have a question if you would. What is your background in conservation?
So right now, I actually, some regards to animals, I'm a volunteer at the Stone Zoo. I currently am speaking about just the species survival plans of some of the animals there, specifically the Mexican Great Wolf. In addition to that, I've been working at wildlife rehab and I'm currently working at a veterinary clinic. And so this point to the committee will be admittedly one of my first experiences hands-on with conservation. However, I'm very excited to get involved and just see just how the process works and kind of different ideas.
Any other members of the city council wishing to talk to Zachary? Zachary, we thank you for your appearance by means of electronically and we look forward to your service to our community. As you probably heard, there's a little bit of a problem going on conservation with in terms of membership and keeping people on board. And we're going to come to the conclusions of what's going on there. We're going to find out what's, why are these people so unhappy that they're resigning? Because initially they were all enthused to take these positions and all of a sudden something happened and turned this whole picture. So we know some of it has been told to us this evening by one counselor, Counselor McKenna. But we need to sit with the mayor and collectively come up with something and find out so we can report back to each and every one of you what's taking place in our city. Motion of Florida approve Zachary Bisconti. All favor, all opposed? Zachary, we will vote you out favorably this evening. There's no need for you to stay electronically involved. We will vote you out favorably and we look forward to your appointment and your confirmation has been approved. Thank you, sir. Thanks for your effort to work for our community. Next is 21-234, appointment of Natalie Pardo to the Conservation Commission. Natalie available?
Here, hello. This is Natalie Pardo.
Hi Natalie, how are you?
Great, thank you.
And the reason that you couldn't be physically present in the council chamber this evening is what?
Yes, so unfortunately it was a little short notice for me and I'm out of town working this week.
Okay. Now, when the Conservation Commission meetings meet, will you be available for those also?
Yes, I'm typically always in Revere.
Okay. And did you not know about this appointment or did you apply for it? How did you become part in?
Yes, I did apply. I was just notified about the appointment earlier today, so I wasn't aware that I'm about this specific meeting. So I apologize for that.
You were notified today?
Yes.
I got your name on, okay. This communications thing is, this is getting to be a mystery because I got this information last week. So, okay, all right. Any questions from the membership of the subcommittee? Counselor Janino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I echo my previous comments. I mean, if she found out this morning and is here today, thank you for making an attempt and for being here so we can at least talk to you and get to know you before you start this important work. And I'm sure Counselor Guanasso is going to ask you my next question, so I'll leave it to him to ask your background.
Counselor McKenna.
I'm going to ask the question, Counselor.
Go ahead.
So Natalie, is it Natalie or Natalie?
Natalie.
Excuse me?
Natalie.
Natalie. So Natalie, what is your background in conservation?
My background is in public health and health sciences and I've actually worked for the City of Chelsea for about three years, so I have a good background in municipal work overall.
Okay, thank you very much and thank you for taking the time to meet with us.
Any other members of the subcommittee wishing to speak? Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to know if these people are confirmed this evening, are they going to be available ASAP so that we can get down to the business of electing a chairman of the Conservation Commission? Because currently we don't have one and there seems to be a lack of communication to the residents in certain areas without the chairperson. So I would just like to have this done ASAP and so we can get down to protecting the people in the neighborhoods.
Well, I'm sure that the people in the neighborhood of Riverside Ave are interested very much. Counselor Tondo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, Natalie, thank you for showing up. I appreciate your attendance and more importantly, your enthusiasm to help the community of Revere. I do have some questions as to knowledge relative to, as you've said, that you worked in the City of Chelsea and Tom Amorstein will be in the current town manager, knowing him fairly well. What is your knowledge regarding ENF process, Chapter 91, things of that nature?
I honestly don't have too much of a background. I'm more, you know, willing and excited to learn, but I can't say that I have direct experience in this field.
That's a fair, that's a fair response and I appreciate your forthright comments. That said, I thank you for answering them. Mr. Chairman, as was reiterated by, I believe, several of the counselors, one of the things that I think that we need to have is a lawyer on this committee, on the Conservation Committee. I would obviously approve these two wonderful people, but I would ask the mayor that he forward an attorney and more importantly, that that attorney also have a clerk considering the large scale construction that is going to take place, the plethora of information that needs to be understood and digested regarding environmental permitting in the state of Massachusetts. So everything from area of critical concern, Chapter 91, ENF process, I can go through the list.
Okay, Counselor.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask the city clerk now if she would just send a memo to the mayor saying that the appointment chair and its subcommittee would like to have a meeting with him in terms of what's going on in very layman terms, what's going on with the Conservation Commission? Why so many resignations and what direction are we going with this body that's so important to our community? And we need that meeting as soon as possible so that we can get all the people in this community feeling secure that we have a learned source that's helping us in our conservation issues. Any other business before us? Seeing none, thank you for your attendance and I thank those tuning in electronically. And again, in the future, it's a mandate that you appear at the city council chamber as all these folks have taken the opportunity to come here. All the city councils showed up and the city clerk. We expect the appointees to appear before us live also. Thank you. Salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members, Counselor Janino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Counselor Keith.
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Counselor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Counselor Novoselfsky.
Here.
Here, Counselor Powers.
Here.
Here, Counselor Rotundo.
Present.
Here, Counselor Serino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Bisconti.
Here.
Here, and Counselor President Zambudo.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Calendar item number two, approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of June 28th, 2021.
So moved, Mr. President. All in favor, all opposed? Show it.
Calendar item number three, the city council will award a certificate of merit to all COVID-19 vaccine ambassadors.
You know, over the past six months or so in the City of Revere, these young people, these vaccine ambassadors, some of them who I've met on the street, some of them in my house. And being a nurse for me, if you don't realize how dangerous it is to get COVID-19, ask someone who's lost somebody. And these, and I'm calling you kids, these young kids would go door to door to people that didn't speak English as well as I do, spoke it as a second language off of a, oh, you can't, this is the first time someone can't hear me, so okay. So there are a lot of young people that are out here that went out door to door in the effort to bring the City of Revere's vaccination rate to 70%. Over a six-month period, I believe it is, these young men and women went door to door. And as I said earlier, as a nurse, you know what COVID-19 can do. These people were going into people's homes and asking them if they got their vaccine, if they would get a vaccine. Because some of the people that live in our community do not speak English as well as I do. And more importantly, some of them don't speak English at all. So it is the hardest part of the community that you want to reach in order to ensure that they get vaccinated because they're the most vulnerable. Whether you speak Arabic, whether you speak Spanish, Portuguese, French, Creole, people were there to speak their language to help them. In Arabic, in Espanol, in Francais, in Português, in their language. In fact, some of these young people came to my door and I seen them in my hallway. I took a picture with them and later on I was told by Olga that they were shocked to hear that I was a city counselor, just a regular person. And then a couple of days later, maybe a week later, I see three guys walking up the street in their little vax and they're all, you know, happy and proud to serve the community. And, you know, when you see someone doing something that's putting their life in danger to help those that are underserved to begin with, to me, that's an issue of merit. Because you're putting yourself in harm's way to save somebody else's life. And that's what they were doing. They were asking people to get involved, to get a vaccine to prevent themselves from getting COVID-19 by giving it to somebody else. And they were just going door to door, these young kids. So that's why I'd offered them one of our highest award of merit. That said, I don't know how many people are here, but there are a lot of people that actually did this. And I want to thank Dipurana, I want to thank Olga, thank God, I want to thank Ina and many of the other people as well. But if I mess up your names, I apologize and correct me, please. And I also forgot that there was a large contingency of people who also spoke Cammer as well. So I want to make sure that we recognize that this is a community that includes everyone. May I read? Thank you.
Read one and then just call me.
Ehabe Hasmeh. I'm killing the name, I'm sorry. It says, City of Revere, certificate of merit. An acknowledgement of extraordinary distinguished meritorious action in your role at, you can't hear me? This is really sad when people can't hear me. I'm not being bashful, you know better than that. City of Revere, certificate of merit. An acknowledgement of extraordinary distinguished meritorious action in your role as a COVID-19 vaccine ambassador for the City of Revere, Massachusetts. Special recognition is hereby accorded to Ehabe Hasmeh. Okay. The first name is spelled E-H-A-B. Ehabe. Ehabe. Yalla. Yalla. I'm sorry for killing it. How do I say it right?
Yeah, no, last name. Hazameh.
Hazameh. Okay. Again? Mr. Hazameh, your work as a COVID-19 vaccine ambassador directly and meaningfully impacted the City of Revere's efforts to assist city vulnerable populations, providing multilingual and on-the-ground outreach, which included demonstrating good public health behavior, explaining vaccine importance, social distancing rules and requirements, and general COVID-19 information. And witness whereof, the certificate of merit is gratefully bestowed by the mayor and the city council of the City of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its residents, the 20th day of July, the 12th day of July, my glasses are terrible, in the year of our Lord 2021 and of the independence of the United States of America, the 245th, we here present you with a certificate of merit, signed by Counselor Anthony Zambudo, Mayor Rego, and attested by Ashley Melnick and ordered by the Revere City Council as a whole.
How do you just read the names now?
Thank you. Now I hope I don't screw up the names. You're laughing at me. This is hard. Sumaya Bahami.
There you go. You got it right. You might not be able to. You got to be careful. Have you got a list?
Nor Haludia.
I think Angel's not here right now. We'll give that to Olga.
Jennifer Aguilera. Not the singer. Okay. Madeline Alvarez.
Hi. Lucas here? Thank you. Mina Sheikh. Nada. I know she's here. Abu Khadiba.
And thank you for letting me in the other day. Would you like your coffee? Shupa.
Thank you so much, Keith.
Leanna.
Leana Matatui. Rashid Dukali. Lydie Duque. Lydie, did I say her wrong? Laif Almatiwari. Lynn Wen. Natividad Hernandez. Hoyle Goga. All right, so I do apologize, it's a hard name to pronounce. So Havati Tien. Serena Sau. Rihanna Alta. Brittany Sau. Asama Abu Fauda. Asma. Asma, I can't believe I screwed this up. Joslin Flores. Vani Hood. Talz Bukhari. Tabitha Hernandez. Gladys Cordón. Ethan Francois. Tiamah Hosani. Xavier Alvarez. Camille Pinto. We already did Kevin. Kevin Akaye. Angel Hernandez. Olga Takor. And Ina Tal. I am gonna take a minute. I'm sorry. Olga, thank you. Aspete. So Olga and Ina are part of We, and you all know her. You all know what she does. They work with a very small budget and take care of hundreds of people. During COVID, they distributed thousands of diapers and food and baby formula and everything that you could imagine. This is the nonprofit that provides the care where care is needed. These are the people that we need to help. Thank you. Olga, para Ina. Mr. President, I want to thank you for the leniency, more importantly, the length in which we spent in order to do it. If we could take a recess, I'm sure people would want to take a photo.
Let's have a round of applause of everybody. Why don't you stand in front of them and get a photo?
Absolutely dimpled. Asma Yalla, just hit that.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, good afternoon, everyone. I just wanted to say thank you to this recognition. It's a great honor, actually, to receive the recognition from all of you. I wanted to speak in behalf of my team. We have been helping the family during this tough times, helping them with a food assistant, rental assistant, translation, SNAP application, getting their vaccine done. And it's great to see how far we have come and the work we have done. So thank you again for this recognition for all of us. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Now? Okay. My name is Leana Jorge Matute. This is my name. I am a COVID ambassador for the city of Revere for over a year now. I have had the pleasure to work with my fellows ambassadors, provide assistance to our Revere residents for housing and food assistance. We also provide refer to surrounding community partners for our residents. And I love, I love to work in the city of Revere, and I love to serve my people. Thank you so much.
Okay, I guess we'll take a couple-minute recess and let everybody file out.
One more, one more.
Oh, sorry. Go right.
Thank you, thank you. I want to take, thank you so much to all of you to give the recognition to all of our ambassadors who have been working in the rain, in the cold, in the hot weather. Thank you. This means a lot to them. For some of them, it's their first job, and this is a great experience. Thank you so much.
Okay, two-minute recess.
Please, can you leave the chambers if you got, if you're not gonna stay? We have to continue with the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, back to the order of business here. We will now take up calendar item 16 and 18 in accordance with Rule 17 of the City Council Rules of Order. As they are, to the Director of Finance, please.
Calendar item number 16, communication from the city auditor relative to fiscal year 2021 year-end transfers.
Mr. CFO, Mr. Visque.
Good evening, Richard Visque, CFO, 281 Broadway. As you know, we, fiscal year ends June 30th. We have 15 days to do our year-end adjustments to make sure we close the books with no deficits. And what you have before you are those entries that are required to be transferred by the city council, and I'm here to answer any questions on any of those.
Any questions of the councils? On the transfers?
Shall the city council approve the fiscal year 2021 year-end transfers as reported in the city auditor's July 8th, 2021 communication? I'm sorry, in today's July 12th communication. Councilor Janino is absent. Councilor Guanaso?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the transfers have been approved. Calendar item number 18, communication from the city auditor relative to free cash appropriations for the year end.
Mr. Visque.
Yes, thank you. Those transfers that weren't able to be made to cover deficits and appropriations from 2021, we do have to use some of our free cash to, at least one of them, for solid waste, which ran over budget due to the large volume of solid waste that was thrown out during the pandemic. And we're also seeking $125,000 for the Revere Sand Sculpting Festival, as well as $100,000, which may be a little premature, but I believe the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, when approved, this will be the seed money to start that fund. So those are the three free cash transfers that we have here. I'm sorry if that was a little out of order, I thought it was adopted at the last meeting, but.
Councilor Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just in the ladies' room, I'd like to be recorded as yes on the last vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, any questions of the auditor?
I have no questions.
The chairman has no questions. Looks like none of the councils have any questions on the transfers.
Shall the city council... Shall the City Council approve a transfer from free cash in the amount of $550,000 to various funds as reported in the July seventh, 2021 verification of funds from the City Auditor? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the free cash appropriations have been approved. Back to the regular order of business, Counselor. Calendar item number four, Hearing Called as Ordered on an Ordinance Further Amending the Short-Term Rental Ordinance.
This is a public hearing. Proponents, people in favor. Mr. Director.
Good evening, everyone. Nick Katnazel, Director of Short-Term Rentals. The reason why we wanted to change in the ordinance is to move it from a sixty-day period to six months. And the reason being is because the short period of time of sixty days, we felt, the mayor felt also, that we wouldn't get people applying because of all of the application fees and all the state regulations that they have to go through. So this is the change that we have in order. And I think it's a thing that we need in the city. Reason being is that we have identified over 140 properties now that are doing short-term rentals. Some of them are legit, you know, they don't even know we have an ordinance in place. We advertised it in the local newspapers. We are having problems with people renting out their properties right now, and especially in the Point of Pines. We have a problem down there where they're having huge parties, police being called in. So it is a problem. So we will probably be taking applications sometime in August. We are waiting for the software right now. We have the Director of Technology, Ruben Cantor, back here. If you would like to ask any questions, to myself, Ruben, we'd be glad to answer them.
Any other proponents, people in favor wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents, people opposed? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Councillors? Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a great change for Revere. Boston has adopted one year, and we've gone from sixty days now to six months. So I think this is a good change, and we've compromised. So I think this will be great. And also with the software that we've purchased, it's going to track all the Airbnbs and the short rentals. So we'll have a track of them. So I think this is a great, great compromise and change to this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Mr. Cantor, if you could answer just a quick question, I'm sorry.
Counselor?
Director?
The software that we have, does it interact with Airbnb itself?
Yes, with scrapes.
Okay, and can we also do VRBO and all those others?
I forget the number. It scrapes from something like 135 different websites and sources.
So grabs them all.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nick, I have a question for you. As you know, there have been several problems down in the Point of Pines with regard to people just taking the liberty of renting out their homes, not even being on the premises when these situations occurred. What I'd like to know is, can you give me an idea, you know, when will be the cutoff date for someone not registering? When we can take legal action?
Right now, we're in the process of working, sending out letters to all the properties that we identified through Airbnb and other different agencies. There'll be a letter being sent out, and they'll have approximately thirty days, which is approximately August, to register their property. If they don't register their property and we will be tracking it, fines will be issued.
Yeah, I would certainly hope so because we've had a real bad situation, as you know, and I'd like to have that addressed. Thank you.
There's a lot, there's a lot to it, you know, it's not just, it's not cut and dry. It's pretty, you know, there's a lot, a lot to going through this, the process, you know, the fire department has to be involved. We have to, there's an inspection of the apartment before they can get the license. So it's, and there's only so many people can be on the premises. They can't be having loud parties and everything. It's right in the ordinance.
That's been the situation down there. As a matter of fact, Friday night, as you probably are aware, they were shooting videos down there on the street, tying up the street.
And. Yes.
To the residents down there and myself, that's completely unacceptable.
Yes, I agree with you 100%. We had a Zoom call on Friday night with, with the attorneys from the city and the homeowners down in the pines. Nobody should have to live like that. It's, you know, it's a bad situation. The owner of that property has been very uncooperative with the city. Seized assist letter was sent out to the owner of the property, I believe, today. And yesterday, I think it was yesterday, I'm sorry. And so we're addressing that problem, problem right now, the attorneys for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Katnazel. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Counselor Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm glad we're signing to finally put some teeth into the ordinance that I helped with some of my colleagues to create and the hard effort that went into this. And this was a process that took months and months. And this wasn't just something that we took out of a book and copied it. We, we worked hard on this particular effort. And now, what your direction, and I'm giving you all the applause that you deserve because your past history shows that you will correct the situation if need be. Because a few months back, a year or so, on Patriot Parkway, they had a similar situation where they were jumping off the roof into a pool. And this is from an Airbnb rental. And the homeowner was absentee, obviously, and unaware of what's taking place. You can care less as long as they get the money. But they're jumping off the roof into the pool. So we need some sanctions against this kind of activity for the safety of our residents, for the people in the neighborhood. Protect the integrity of the neighborhood is the most important thing our job and responsibility is. So, good work.
I totally agree with you, Counselor. Anybody else? Okay, Ledger Feares.
Calendar item number five, Hearing Called as Ordered on the Application of Revere Hotel LLC, 405 American Legion Highway, requesting a Chapter 148 license from the Revere City Council to enable the appellant to store a total of 4,455 gallons of flammable liquids and 146 gallons of combustible liquids to be contained within 81 vehicles parked underneath the hotel structure at 405 American Legion Highway.
Public hearing, proponents, people in favor. Name an address for the record, please.
Good evening, Paul Moone, Code Red Consultants, 154 Turnpike Road in Southborough. We are the appellant on behalf of the owner, serving as a fire protection engineering consultant. We submitted the application, went through Deputy Chief Paul Cheever at the Fire Department, where it was reviewed and approved on his behalf prior to submission. The only two points of clarification I was hoping to make today was, the first is the flammable and combustible liquids are entirely based on the vehicular, motor oil, and fuel. There's no additional proposed storage. And furthermore, only 22 of the 81 spaces are actually below the structure. The balance of the 81 will be at grade but open to air above. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other proponents, people in favor? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Opponents, someone opposed? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Councillors?
Mr. President.
Counselor Guanasso.
Point of inquiry, Mr. President. Is this Avid Hotel? The attorney, come to the podium, please. Is this Avid Hotel?
Paul Moone, Code Red Consultants, yes, it is.
It is.
Yes, sir.
This is the new folks that came into town with the thoughts of doing a good thing for our community and build a nice structure. The only thing they forgot to do, sir, is to put qualified people inside to manage the hotel to stop prostitution and other illegal activities that are occurring there.
Allegedly.
I went, this is not germane to this particular app, your proposal tonight, but I want the councils to be aware that this kind of activity is occurring there. And I'm talking about not one, two, or three occasions. I went to get my oil changed, and I just, out of conversation, asked, how's your new neighbor? Why did I get an earful? They said on several occasions, this type of activity, girl, young girls running out.
Point of order?
Unfortunately, Counselor, I gotta stalk you. I gotta stalk you.
Why, are you a customer, Counsel, that you were concerned?
We have to stick to, we gotta stick to the hearing, sir.
So Counselor, I'll be voting against this proposal.
Paul Moone, Code Red Consultants, just for context, I'm not an attorney. I am a fire protection engineer by trade, so you'll have to forgive me. I have a very, very limited context here. I'm.
You're here for the license.
What is the fire rating is what we want to know.
You're here for the license, we understand. Okay. Counselor Rotundo, did you have something?
Thank you, Mr. President. Understanding what's at hand and clearly Counselor Guanasso's concern. One, I think we should send a letter to the chief in order to investigate this if arrests have not have taken place already. And more importantly, I think obviously the merit of the issue.
Now you're straying from the subject, ma'am.
No, the merit of the issue is regarding fire protection, and we should vote on that tonight.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other councillors? Hearing and seeing none, this will go to, oh, we can vote on this tonight, okay. All right, on the fire license, protection license.
Shall the City Council grant a Chapter 148 license for a parking garage at 405 American Legion Highway? Counselor Janino?
No.
No, Counselor Guanasso?
No.
No, Counselor Keefe?
I'm voting on the fire suppression system, yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
It's only the code red piece.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
No.
No, Counselor Sorino?
No.
No, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the Chapter 148 license has been granted.
Suspension of rules, Mr. President.
On suspension of the rules, all in favor, all opposed?
Reconsideration, hoping it will not prevail.
Reconsideration, in hopes it does not prevail.
Calendar item number six, Hearing Called as Ordered on the Application of 90 Ocean, 90 Ocean Owner LLC, 1 Beacon Street, 15th Floor, Boston, Mass., requesting a Chapter 148 license from the Revere City Council to enable the appellant to store a total of 1,500 gallons of flammable liquids to be contained within 75 vehicles parked underneath a multifamily residential structure at 90 Ocean Avenue, Revere, Mass.
This is a public hearing. Proponents, name an address, please.
Good evening, Carrie Anne Green. I'm an attorney with D'Ambrogio Brown LLP, address of 14 Proctor Avenue, Revere. So I'm a proponent of this application. I represent the applicant 90 Ocean, 90 Ocean Owner LLC. We're requesting a flammable license to store 75 vehicles at 90 Ocean Avenue. It should be approximately 1,500 gallons. It's already been approved by the Fire Department, and we're seeking your approval today.
Thank you. Any other proponents, people in favor? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents, people opposed? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Councillors? Hearing and seeing none, we'll call for a vote.
Shall the City Council grant a Chapter 148 license for a parking garage at 90 Ocean Avenue? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the Chapter 148 license has been granted. Calendar item, I'm sorry, next up is the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee Report.
Chairman Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee met. We voted, we voted on three agenda items. They were all voted unanimously and favorably. Can we take a roll call on each one separately?
Madam Clerk.
The first is, sorry, Council Order 21-128, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the City Council request the state delegation to amend the open meeting law through legislation in which translation of multiple foreign languages are used in the notification process on all spectrums of medium used to comply with the current legislation. It's noted that Councillors Janino and Sorino are recused from this motion. Counselor Janino is recused. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino is recused. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the motion is approved. Calendar item number eight, that's the ordinance establishing an Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Audit on a second reading, all in favor, all opposed? So voted. Audit on a third and final reading, all in favor, all opposed? Roll call on engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the City Council approve an ordinance establishing the Affordable Housing Trust Fund? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, this ordinance is engrossed and ordained.
Mr. President, point personal privilege.
State your point, Counselor.
I want to congratulate the Orego administration for doing something that should have been done 20 years ago. Thank you.
Mr. President, suspension of rules.
Councillors, go ahead.
In hopes of reconsideration.
Oh, reconsider, oh, okay. On suspension of the rules, all in favor, all opposed? So voted. On suspend, reconsideration in the hopes that it does not prevail. Okay, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number nine is the ordinance establishing rules and regulations for dog parks.
Audit on a second reading, all in favor, all opposed? As amended, I'm sorry. Audit on a third and final reading, as amended. All in favor, all opposed? Roll call on engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the City Council approve an ordinance establishing, establishing rules and regulations for dog parks as amended? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance has been established. Next up is the Appointments Subcommittee Report.
Chairman Guanasso.
Mr. President, earlier this afternoon, the Appointments Subcommittee met, and we had the following items before us. Number one is 21-107, reapointment of Tufts Construction as a licensed drain layer. And that was recommended to be voted out favorably by the committee. Next was the appointment of J.R. Vinegro as a licensed drain layer. And that was voted by the committee, voted out favorably. Next was reapointment of Earthwork Industries as a licensed drain layer. That was placed on hold. Then we had Commonwealth Construction as a licensed drain layer, and that was also voted out favorably. I asked the committee, voted all as one.
Roll call.
Shall the City Council confirm the appointments as, for drain layers as reported by Counselor Guanasso? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed. Yes, the appointments have been confirmed.
Mr. President, earlier, we also had two appointees to the Conservation Commission. The first being 21-133, appointment of Zachary Visconti to the Conservation Commission. That was voted out favorably. Next was 21-234, appointment of Natalie Pardo to the Conservation Commission. And she was also voted out favorably. I ask the committee of the whole to vote these out favorably this evening, and thank you for your, your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Shall the City Council confirm the appointments to the Conservation Commission as reported by Counselor Guanasso? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed.
Thank you.
Next up is calendar item number 15, communication from Wayne Rose, 19 Thorndike Street, requesting that the City Council establish repeal powers for any board or commission.
Mr. Rose?
All members, how are you tonight? My name's Wayne Rose, 19 Thorndike Street. First, I'd like to thank the council for letting me appear here. As I stand before the council, I am asking that this honorable body file an ordinance that it would allow the City Council, by majority vote, to remove or recall any member appointed to any committee or commission in the city of Riviere when circumstances exist that would justify someone's removal. I hear many City Council members talk about checks and balances, yet we have no mechanism to remove anyone from any of these commissions or committees. So I'm asking that you would file an appropriate ordinance to address this. Counsel Rotundo filed a motion last year. It went into Steve Morabito's latest legislative Subcommittee, where the motion just sat. I followed along, I can't find, I can't find no minutes on it. When these motions go into, one second, please, when these motions go into a Subcommittee, are they not supposed to go in, get a recommendation, and come back to the council? Or am I wrong on that?
Mr. President, through you?
Go ahead.
In particular, on that particular motion, actually, I had surgery, and I was unable to follow with the motion. But Counsel Morabito made a very, very poignant statement of fact, that if you do for one, you have to do for all. And so to leave it in committee and let it die was the appropriate thing to do, but more importantly, I couldn't attend. But to single out any one group is incorrect.
I haven't singled out anybody yet. I'm trying to address it all.
And by you addressing it, I understand what you're saying. The question is, what is the litmus test, and who decides?
How are these people quarried? Is anybody quarried? Does anybody do a background check on these people? How are they vetted? These people go onto these committees, nobody knows anything about them. They're just appointed, you people vote on them, you don't, you don't vet them, you don't quarry them. So what is, what's going on? Why can't we have a balance here? Checks and balances? That's all I'm asking.
I understand what you're asking. What you're asking is not doable by the means you're asking to do it. It can't be done in an ordinance. This is, this is mass general law. I would suggest...
Could you quote the law for me, please?
I would suggest...
Could you quote the law for me, please? I'm asking you to quote the law, can I see it? I would love to see it. Do you have this in front of you?
I don't have it in front of me.
Or are you just gonna say you have it?
I don't have it in front of me.
Well, then, then it's not, it's not here.
Listen, I'll state my reputation on it, okay?
I don't want to hear that. I don't want to hear that. I want to see the proof of it.
I'm telling you that.
I'm asking you to do something.
You can take my advice, or you don't have to take my advice. I'm telling you, it can't be done by an ordinance.
Can't be done.
It cannot be done by an ordinance. That doesn't mean it can't be done. You can, you can try to put this on a ballot, and the ballot question to overturn the state law.
So you guys can, you guys can vote to appoint these people, and you have no recourse to take anybody off of any of these commissions or committees? Is that what you're telling me?
Yeah, I'm telling you, these are mayor's appointments, and we have no authority to remove them.
You vote on them, so don't tell me you have no authority on it.
We have the authority to vote on them. I didn't say we don't have the authority to vote on them.
So you don't have the authority to take anybody off these commissions?
Point of information.
State your point.
So this is how it works, Mr. Rose. Okay, the mayor appoints...
Yep, City Council votes on it.
The City Council votes on it.
Yep.
Most, a lot of the terms are two years, okay? So we're voting on a two-year term.
So if you have a murderer on a committee, he can stay there.
There are very few...
If a murderer gets on one of these committees...
Point of order, Rule 19.
All the rapists, all the rapists, you heck, you can...
I sat quietly.
There's no reason for you to raise your voice when I'm hearing my name up there.
I'm on the floor.
Mr. Rose, Mr. Rose.
I'm on the floor, Mr. Rose, I'm asking you politely.
Point of order? Point of order? You're on the ballot this year. The thing is, I will not, the reason I will not vote for this, I believe in checks and balances. And I do not think that we should be voting on something where we can abuse our power and just eliminate any position that we want. It's just, it's just, we already appoint the position, why, why?
Okay, enough. Counselor Morabito has the floor. Counselor Morabito has the floor, I'll give you a chance to rebut.
If you're gonna conduct yourself in the chambers, if you're elected like this, shame on you.
Okay, he has the floor right now. All right, enough, enough, enough. All right, if, if you have anything else to, I'll, I'll get you the copies of the law, but there is a different, let me just tell you, there's a different law for each board, okay? So it's not like something I have at the top of my head, but what I'm stating here is factual. I will present them to you tomorrow, but there is a different law for each board. It's not, it's not one blanket... Oh, I'm sorry, I thought...
So, so you guys have the right to appoint somebody and vote on it, but you have no recourse to take anybody off of a commission? Am I correct on this?
Yes, you are correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Placed on file.
Calendar item number 19, motion presented by Counselor Keefe that the mayor be...
Someone at the podium.
Excuse me, Ashley, could you pass these out to everybody, please? I'd pick these up, thank you.
Wait, what is this?
It's the Constitution.
It's always nice to have a copy of the Constitution.
Hi, my name is Gina Salamone Castiello, a lifelong resident of Riviere, and thank you for having me here. I want to put on record the oath of office that you all took as a City Councilor. I solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as City Councilor.
You gotta tell me what you're speaking on here.
I'm speaking on what Wayne just spoke about, and...
That was, that was already placed on file, but...
What was placed on file? But I wanted, I have something that I'd like to say, because I've been reaching out to everybody, and the City Council does not allow me to get in front of you. So here I am, and I'd like to speak my piece. So as I was saying, is I have the oath of office that you all took. Tony, you don't have to raise your eyes to me. I solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as a City Councilor according to the best of my ability and understanding, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution of the laws of the Commonwealth, so help me God. So I presented to you the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, two excerpts, Article 1, the preamble, page 4, and Article 16, page 91. And I understand that you all did take this oath of office. And I ask the council why I have been denied a public forum on a discrimination issue with a member of an appointed committee.
This, this has no place here, this is not...
Well, where does it have a place, Tony?
Point of order, Mr. President.
Hold on.
Point of personal privilege.
State your point.
Mr. President, this isn't on the council agenda. More importantly, if you feel aggrieved, I would get an attorney, and I would sue.
You know, also, the issue I'm referring to has been placed in a Subcommittee. And I would like to know what has transpired with your ordinance in the Subcommittee, Steve. You said at the last meeting I was at that we may not agree, but you work for all people. So I'd like you to answer me that question. How do we, how does the public get any updates on these Subcommittee's?
So they are public, they were publicized. And that was in my Subcommittee. If the maker of the motion does not show up, it gets put on file.
I understand that, so maybe, I don't know how this all works, because I'm not really...
So if the maker of the motion would like to resubmit a motion, he can do that.
So why don't we do that, George? Why don't you resubmit a motion?
Because I don't agree with it at this moment.
Oh, so why did you even come up with the ordinance if you don't agree with it? Why was it even created?
Well, you know, something, sometimes people are wrong. And Counsel Morabito brought to my attention that if you're going to do it for one, you have to do it for all. And then I got into the complexities of the litmus test and everything that's related to it by law, and who am I to determine? So I didn't feel that it was fit to reestablish it.
That's true. Who are you to determine, because I want, you know, I'm gonna end with this. Equality and natural rights for all men are what the citizens of this great Commonwealth deserve. And that's not what the citizens of this great city of Riviere are getting.
Thank you for your comments.
I guess we need a new clerk.
Calendar item number 19, motion presented by Counselor Keefe that the mayor be requested to utilize free cash or seek out grant funding to install water features at the city's parks.
Counselor Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's pretty self-explanatory. We, outside of the beach, which is beautiful and is its own natural water feature, I think that a lot of residents of Riviere have spoken up and request to have some water features at, at some of our community parks. Not all of them, but I think it'd be nice to have a fountain of some sort. But, boy, what's going on here tonight? Anyway, I think the residents of Riviere would appreciate some of the, especially some of the children would appreciate some water features at our community parks. Thank you.
Anybody else on the motion? Counselor Janino?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know what? I'm gonna save my comments, because I've never been a part of a meeting that's been such a joke. This is probably one of the most embarrassing moments I've ever had as a City Councilor, to sit in a chamber and watch people conduct themselves like this.
I can't disagree with you, Counselor.
I second that.
Unfortunately, that's what we have. Okay, on the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So audit.
Calendar item number 20, motion presented by Counselors Zambudo, Novoselski, and Rotundo that the mayor investigate the feasibility of remodeling and repairing the Veterans Memorial on the American Legion lawn as requested by the Veterans Affairs Director, Mark Silvestri.
Counsel Rotundo?
Mr. President, I would like to put this in committee, obviously have the director speak on this as well. More importantly, get some feedback from the mayor. Obviously, this is about finances. But quite frankly, I'd like to see a revampment of the memorial, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Novoselski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. President. President, there's an idea by Veterans Officer Mark Silvestri to try and utilize the back of the memorial stone in the, in the Legion lawn for our future veterans that we're gonna memorialize. And basically, the black signs, the black signs that are around the city are becoming overwhelming to our DPW staff and putting out all these flags and wreaths. So we're looking to try and make it easy for everybody and still remember our veterans. So we'll look to repair, redesign the back of the stone, so thank you. In committee, if you will.
Thank you, Counselor. If the council won't mind, I'll speak on this. We were all at the Veterans Barbecue when this was discussed. So I'm gonna send this to the Veterans Committee for discussion, and we'll have the director come before us, and we'll, we'll talk about it. Counsel Rotundo?
Absolutely, as Ira had pointed out, his idea, we're all there, we're all gonna move forward.
Let him do a presentation before the committee. Okay, Veterans Committee.
Calendar item number 21, motion presented by Counsel Rotundo that the mayor request the chief of police to provide traffic enforcement at the intersection of Fennel and Borden, Dale and Park, Malden and Patriot Parkway, and Riviere and Sagamore Streets.
Counsel Rotundo?
Aside from getting yelled at by my daughter, my ex-wife, several friends, speeding is horrendous in this area. More importantly, I've seen it myself. Specifically, Park and Dale is very bad. Fennel Street is even worse. It's almost as though it's a raceway now, not to mention that the street's in disrepair. So whatever we can do to add enforcement, I appreciate it. This is something that Counselor Keefe has echoed time and time again. Thank you.
Counsel Sorino?
Thank you, Mr. President. If it's okay with the maker of the motion?
Absolutely.
Could we add Astiev and Sergeant Street? Because right there, people come off the highway, and they do illegal U-turns all the times. Use Astiev as, or Green Tree Lane, rather, as a cut-through. So the intersection of Green Tree Lane and Sergeant Street.
Right. Since we're adding, we'll add Mountain Ave. to that also.
Don't forget Bellingham. I'm sure that there are other areas.
Okay. On the motion as amended, all in favor, all opposed? So audit.
Calendar item number 22, motion presented by Counsel Rotundo that the mayor investigate the feasibility of installing elevated crosswalks in high-traffic areas, including Washington Avenue and North Shore Road.
Counsel Rotundo?
Speaks for itself.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, if I may.
Counsel Novoselski?
This is a, this is a great motion. I've, I've put this in before for Campbell Avenue. I know Counsel Keefe has put this in in a couple other locations. And can I ask, friendly amendment, that we add Campbell Ave. at James Street Crosswalks? Campbell Ave. at James Street Extension.
Anybody else on the motion, all as amended, all in favor, all opposed?
Thank you.
So audit.
Calendar item number 23, motion presented by Counsel Rotundo that the mayor request the Department of Planning and Community Development to investigate the feasibility of creating inclusionary zoning and an affordable housing overlay district to extend from Route 60 to Riviere Beach Boulevard.
Counsel Rotundo?
Mr. President, obviously, this is going to need to go into committee, but I'll just make a brief. It speaks for itself.
Right. Okay, anybody else on this? So this will go to zoning. So this will go to zoning.
Calendar item number 24, Motion Presented by Councilor Rotundo that the city of Revere establish a linkage fee for any housing development with over 75 units. Furthermore, that the city look into the feasibility of including commercial properties of 30,000 square feet or greater. Said linkage fee contribution will be based on square footage of developments greater than 75 units and appropriated to the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Counsel Rotundo.
Speaks for itself.
Okay, this will go to zoning and economic development, or maybe zoning and Ways and
Calendar item number 25, Motion Presented by Councilor Novoselsky that the Revere City Council awards certificates of appreciation to the Momentum Athletic Club for their outstanding performances at the National Youth Outdoor Championship in Georgia.
Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, everybody probably saw in the Revere Journal this past week that this group of 11 kids that have been practicing at the stadium in Revere, there's 11 kids, and out of the 11 kids, they got seven medals, seven of the top three medals in each race. And they've been practicing for it for, they actually, the club's been together since 2010. So I would hope that we can recognize them at the next meeting and be able to bring them up here and present them with certificates. I see the coach here. Thank you very much. You did a great job with the kids.
Thank you very much for that opportunity that you give us. So we established, we are here since 2010. I remember I was here in 2010 with two athletes, now we have 30 athletes. So we are very proud that we, we heard the city of Revere in Rome, Georgia, for seven times, so in front of 6,500 speakers, and like almost 600 athletes from nationwide. So thank you very much for that opportunity to give us. Thank you.
Great, congratulations. Thank you.
Okay, Coach, good job. And I'll, I'll be giving the list, I'll be, I'll be giving the list of names with the coaches' names, so I can present them that night.
Onto late motions. Calendar item number 26, Motion Presented by Councilor Rotundo that the city of Revere investigate the feasibility of providing space at the McKinley School or other city-owned building to nonprofits in the city of Revere, which educate, advocate, and advance the rights of immigrants, refugees, low-income women, and their families through organizing leadership, development, and service delivery.
Counsel Rotundo.
Mr. President, quickly speaking, I believe that there is more than one idea to go into that space. I believe that the Mayor is working on that, so I'll say, speak for itself.
Economic development.
Calendar item number 27, Motion Presented by Councilor Zambudo that Rule 20 of the City Council Rules of Order Presentation of Awards of the City Council be amended as follows. The maker of the motion offering the certificates shall be responsible for the cost of materials for the certificate at $5 per certificate. This cost includes one presentation folder, one certificate, and one gold seal. Total cost shall be paid in full prior to the presentation and shall be paid to the Office of the City Clerk Office Materials Account.
This has to lay on the table for a week. It's a rule change. I don't know, can, yeah, okay.
I just want to say one point of information on it that I actually found interesting. So when I first got into the State House, I thought that those were supplied by the state, and in fact, they're not. So as a state rep, I actually have to purchase packets of citation covers, I have to buy my old gold stickers, and I have to buy my own ribbon. So if you get a citation from me, know that it came, it was made with love, but we do actually have to purchase them ourselves. And that was one of the first things I said to Ricky, is what, they don't just give them to us? Because I'm so used to that from our lovely city clerk. But to my surprise, the state does not supply them, we're actually in charge of our own. So although it might sound foreign to us, all the state reps pay for their own, so, thank you.
Thank you for that information. That's great information. I didn't know that. Now I'm, now I'm even more in favor of my, my rule change. But like I said, it is a rule change, and it needs to lay on the table, so then we can, hopefully, we can all vote on it when we're allowed. Can we retroactively, to Rotundo? That's what I'm hoping for.
Calendar item number 28, Motion Presented by Councilor Novoselsky that the Mayor direct the city engineer and the Water and Sewer Department to work with the MBTA, Northeast Mosquito Control, DEP, and our state delegation, and any other necessary agency to dredge the County Ditch Sales Creek south along the MBTA Blue Line tracks from Shirley Avenue to Standish Road, and parallel to Standish Road west from Porter Avenue to North Shore Road. This is a health hazard to the residents with flooding, mosquitoes, and rodents.
Counselor Novoselsky.
Mr. President, this is a sign of frustration. I've been trying to get this done for at least 10 years now. The last time, the MBTA did help us by cleaning out along the tracks, and Northeast Mosquito Control started to clean out from the railroad tracks out to North Shore Road, and unfortunately, back then, they found the body in the, in the creek, and they stopped doing it. Now the DEP has put new regulations that they can't just stack all the debris onto the side, they have to take it away. It's a lot more expensive to do. So hopefully, we can get all these agencies together and work together, and so nobody has to put out the $3 million that has to be, you know, that has to be done. So very frustrating, and especially with spraying, you know, there's a lot of spots there that mosquitoes breed, and I think it's time that we, we took the bull by the horns and get, get people together and have a meeting with everybody and make it work. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So audit.
And late communication from the Mayor requesting approval of a resolution relative to the Parkland Acquisitions and Renovations for Communities Program for Gibson Park, Harmon Park, and Costa Park.
So I'm just, I just want to educate everybody what this really is. This is in order for them to seek the grants to repair these parks. We need to pass this resolution tonight, and it's, it was time-sensitive, so I allowed it. So we'll waive the reading, I think, correct? Okay. On the motion.
Shall the City Council approve a resolution to file and accept grants with and from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs to the Parkland Acquisition and Renovations for Communities Program for Revere's Accessibility and Inclusion Park renovation project for Costa Park, Harmon Park, and Gibson Park? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith?
Will we be adding water features? Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the resolution has been approved.
So just before I closed the meeting out, I was reminded by my colleague about flooding and all that other good stuff down at the creek, and we have our distinguished Ward 6 resident, Sal Fazzoni, out here. I just wanted to recognize him, because he's been through this for 20-some-odd years with flooding, and I think we've, we've reached a, at least a good point, so, so, all right. Oh, yeah, we'll mention that.
I just, I cannot say thank you enough. For the effort that, of course, I made, and the effort with the new administration, what he made, and again, Donnie Charamolo and Joe Lake, can't beat him. So thanks for recognizing me.
I know, thank you. Thank you so much. Ricky Sorino. Thank you, Rocco. Thank you very much. Uh, just for the, for the audience out there, we were supposed to have fireworks tonight for 125th anniversary of the beach. Instead, it's been, it's been postponed till tomorrow, and so we will have plenty of This, we'll stand adjourned till August 23rd.